Okay. This is the sixth ZBA hearing on the comprehensive permit application to build a 40B project at 455 Harvard Street. I am the chairman of today's meeting. My name is Kate Poverman. With me is Christopher Hussey and Lark Palermo. Also with us up here are Polly Selko, Assistant Director of Planning for the Town of Brookline, and Karen Martin, who is a planner. All right. So, what's going to happen tonight is that the applicant's team will present revised plans, design plans, and mitigation measures, which I received literally one minute ago. So, we will see that. And then we'll have a report on staff meetings by Ms. Selko, public comment, and then we'll see what's what after that. If you make a presentation or say anything, please come up to the podium. Remember that we are being filmed as well as recorded by stenographer. Say your name clearly, and everybody speak slowly enough for Kristen to capture it. Polly, is there anything you would like to do before we hear from Mr. Bartash?
No, I think you've covered it all. I'll save my comments for later.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. Peter Bartash with Q3 Studio. Here are the architect on the project. Tonight, we have a very brief presentation. This is, these are the materials that we reviewed at our last meeting with the peer-review architect to brief him on the changes that we're proposing to the project. We've made a couple tweaks since that meeting, but ultimately, what we're going to do is look at the changes to the plans, look at the changes to the perspectives, and then look at a few examples of some of the materials that the planning department had asked us to clarify. And if at any point you have questions, comments, please just interrupt me, and we'll take them as they come. So, to say additional information, this is just to reorient everyone in case there are questions about where this site is located, or if we need to refer back to the general locust plan for the project. But in terms of the changes, this is just a brief summary of what those changes are. We have a consolidated parking arrangement, which was necessary to be able to make some adjustments to the setbacks that we'll be talking about momentarily. We've relocated the bike parking. We've expanded the trash room and adjusted the water fire room and utility room locations. We've increased a portion of the setback facing the 78 Thorn dyke street of butter. We have made some adjustments to the window locations facing that of butter. We've also made material adjustments to that facade facing the butter, specifically at the stair tower. We've made some adjustments to the plan at the fourth floor related to that stair tower, which we'll talk about in detail. And we've adjusted some of the service door locations. And all of these changes are in response to direction and feedback we had gotten from the board at our last ZBA hearing, and also some of the feedback that was delivered to us from the peer-review architect via the board. So, with regard to the revised plans, we were asked to really carefully consider what we could feasibly do against the facade facing the 78 Thorn Dyke Street of Butter. And so, the first thing that we did is look at the area immediately surrounding the garage entry, which I'm circling with the cursor at the moment, and to look at the service rooms that we had located up in that same area. We took those service rooms, and we pushed them over to the other side of the project and redistributed them along the back of the garage in order to be able to increase the setback along the edge facing the butter. So, you'll notice that we've taken the setback here, we've added several, I think, we've added about 18 inches to the setback for the first 35 to 40 feet of the building here coming back off of Thorn Dyke Street until you hit the stair tower. Because of the layout in the building above, we chose not to relocate the stairs or reconfigure the stairs. They need to be a certain distance apart in order to meet building code requirements. And they're pretty limited in terms of areas they can land within the garage in order to still be able to accommodate parking. So, we're providing 10 parking spaces within the garage. Seven of them are provided through a semi-automated lift system, which we'll look at in a little more detail a little bit later here. We're providing two compact spaces and one accessible slash van space. And so, you'll notice that we've actually taken all of the lifts, which used to be split on either side of the garage, and we put them in one location in the furthest area of the garage away from the door and the openings that are along Thorn Dyke Street, with the intent of making sure that all of the operation and noise that's generated by those lifts is as far into the garage as possible and buffered on three sides by utility spaces or walls or the retail space to really try to push it as far as we could to the garage here. You'll also notice that by moving the utility rooms, we've actually managed to leave only three doors facing the 78 Thorn Dyke Street of Butter, one of which faces the side of the home, and the other two which face the rear yard in the home. And those doors, the door to the stair is an egress-only emergency door. It's not used for day-to-day access. And the other doors serving the water fire and the main tell data room are only used in the event that those, that equipment needs to be serviced. We did go ahead and expand the trash room to accommodate an additional bin above and beyond what was recommended by the traffic, the trash vendor, so that we had, we planned for even additional capacity. And we relocated one of the other utility rooms closer down to the other stair that is in the same place as it was the last set of plans that we saw. I mentioned that we relocated the bike parking. We're now using a wall-hung rack system that's located right at the back edge of the retail here in the hatched area by one of the two compact spaces. And so, right now, we're planning for between five and six bikes. And as we get into construction and see, you know, if we get to that point and we see how much space we have, we'll try to expand that as we can. But we're comfortable that we can fit that many, those, that many bikes here today. So, as we look at the upper floor for plans two and three, you'll notice that the setback is now increased on the front side of the building. It's carried straight up the entire face of the building, as we had seen from the floor below. There's a slight bump at the stair, and it steps back a foot, and then we have the actual, the other corner of the building facing the 78 Thorn Dyke Street of Butter. So, again, this plan is consistent for floors two and three. And then, on the upper floor, you see the step back that we have at these private roof deck areas where, again, that entire shift that we made at the ground floor is carried all the way up the face of the building. The other thing that you'll notice in plan is that the corridor now extends directly to the outdoors, the stair that extends out through the building. And that corridor used to stop at the rear wall here, and there was a bit of an open space with some fencing that created a clear path from the stair to this, from the corridor to the stair. For life safety purposes and for egoist purposes, we've chosen just to connect those directly so that's conditioned and it's all contained within the building envelope. And you'll see that as we look at the perspective. The roof plan, again, what's not really easy to see here, but is evident when we look at the perspectives, is that we've incorporated a roof screen around the rooftop mechanical equipment, not necessarily for visual purposes, because we don't believe that that equipment would ever really be visible from, from the street below, but mostly for the purpose of redirecting any sort of airborne sound from that equipment upward rather than outward. So, we'll see that as well when we look at the perspectives. So, looking at the perspectives here, this is the perspective at the intersection of Harvard Street and Thorn Dyke Street, and Thorn Dyke Street extends up to the right in the image. And you'll notice that we still have the openings that are using a metal mesh system that we'll see in a moment into the garage itself. You'll see that we've actually incorporated a column at the corner and opened up the wall facing the garage entry to improve the sightlines coming out of the garage looking up Thorn Dyke Street for, for drivers who are exiting out of Thorn Dyke Street. And we've made some really minor adjustments to some of the trim and some of the detailing in response to more detailed comments from the peer-review architect about how we were treating some of those conditions. Here, you can again see in the foreground of the image, we're on Thorn Dyke Street facing back toward Harvard Street. In the foreground of the image, you'll see the column that I was mentioning at the corner of the garage entry, with the garage entry underneath the building and tucked in at the mouth of the garage itself. And all of the windows in this facade, and we have a straight-on elevation that we used to talk about this, but we've taken all of the windows in this facade, and we've coordinated their positions so that they're not directly aligned with the existing windows at 78 Thorn Dyke Street, so that there aren't any direct lines of sight between our units and the home next door. We also did update the material at the balcony railing on the, the fourth floor here to be consistent with that mesh material, again, that we have at the screed openings to the garage, and we'll see examples of that in a minute. So, here, we're just taking a look at an aerial view. Again, that column I mentioned and some of that revised ground floor condition is, is visible here in the kind of lower right-hand corner of the image. And then, you'll see, you know, the window locations. And I mentioned before the roof screen and also the changes at the stair enclosure. Right now, my cursor's circling over that corridor that now extends out to the stair, and you can see at the top of the roof, we have screening around those rooftop mechanical equipment. The stair was previously shown as a brick material. We looked at how that felt and the way it made the facade appear, and it felt like using a lap siding would be a little bit more residential feeling and a little bit less commercial. So, we've made that adjustment to the lap siding along that stair tower. And so, we'll come back to that elevation in a second. We just wanted to show a perspective of the building from Harvard Street facing toward the Thorn Dyke Street intersection. So, the intersection with Thorn Dyke Street is in the lower right-hand corner of the image where my cursor's circling now. And you can see that the rooftop equipment is, is not even visible. The screening isn't visible. The only thing we're seeing is the elevator overrun here in the center of the roof. What you'll notice along the, the ground on this facade are some of the new doors that access the relocated utility rooms and service rooms and trash room. And again, all of those doors are facing the parking lot that serves the retail adjacent to the site. And for purposes of clarity, we've omitted some of the existing ground cover that is, is here on site now. There's actually more green screening in this location than what we're showing, but we, we wanted to be able to show views through and to what's happening at that ground level. This is the elevation facing the 78 Thorn Dyke Street of Butter, and it's a little difficult to read in elevation view, but there is a column here at the corner that's of brick. And this entire area of brick is actually set back on the other side of the garage door. So, this area is open below. Again, we've reviewed all of these window locations relative to the home next door to make sure that there are no direct lines of sight. And along the ground floor, you'll see the three service, or the two service doors and the one egress door I mentioned earlier that are used very infrequently for the project. And so, talking about material examples, there were some questions about the look and feel of this metal mesh system that we were talking about for the garage openings and also for the balcony railing. And so, right here on the left-hand side of the image, you can see that mesh system used for balcony railing on a project that's also in Brookline as well. In this case, it's, it's all kind of a very seamless sort of metal press lock system, which is exactly the same type of system we would be proposing for here at 455 Harvard Street. And you can see the metal garage doors that have that same sort of screening, the same sort of mesh. At the time that this project was constructed, it was not possible for us to have those powder coated in a black to match some of the other trim and features on the project. We had to leave them in an anodized silver or metallic look. It's a long story about why, but it's something that we're actively pursuing now, and we're hoping we can actually color them as well so they even disappear visually even further. But what that does is provides a degree of openness for the aspect of the garage that is meant to help serve the natural ventilation of that garage. And again, there's just one other view you can see on the right-hand side, in a little bit more detail, what those doors look like. Do those doors help with the natural ventilation of the garage?
But Peter, is that going to be what the garage door looks like at 455?
That's what we're proposing, yes. And what that ends up doing is actually allowing for visual continuity through the door for drivers that are exiting the garage. They have even longer sight distance to the sidewalk in case there's anyone walking by. But again, it also does improve the amount of openness for air ventilation in and out of the garage itself. So, that's the architecture portion of the updates that we've made. The, the owner and developer did make a trip to the parking lift manufacturer's facility on the West Coast and took some videos to talk a little bit more about the sound and about the operations of the lifts. If you'd like, we can look at those now unless you have questions you want to talk about.
Could I just ask a couple of questions and make a comment? I don't think you emphasized that by pulling that wall back towards the 78 Thorn Dyke that you actually had to reduce the parking, and you reduced it from 13 down to 10 parking spaces.
That's correct.
I, I know you showed it, but you didn't emphasize that.
Yes, thank you.
The other thing that I would be interested to know is what the height is now of the proposed building, because it may have changed.
The height is consistent with the previous section.
It was 46 feet previously.
Yeah, 46 feet 11 inches in the last.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, it might be interesting for the board to just know what is the setback from the property lines, both on Thorn Dyke and on the side of the building facing the 78 Thorn Dyke, because you, you didn't really mention that.
I'm going to go back to the ground floor plan so we can talk about that.
And can I just add the setbacks all the way around the building?
Yeah, all four setbacks.
If you could just give us current plans for what those setbacks are.
Sure. So, the setbacks that, I'm going to start on Harvard Street, because that's the, that's the easiest and clearest one. We're proposing what's called a zero lot line condition, so there is a zero setback along Harvard Street, and that's the facade here in the lower left-hand corner of the building. What we've done here along the facade of the building that faces the Starbucks parking lot is, we've actually taken the ground floor and we've set that in toward the garage by a foot to increase the width of the pathway along that facade. And so, that, that actual setback in width there is, is five feet or 1 inches here from the property line along that, along the face of the building, but at the ground floor, it actually steps in another foot, so it's at 6 feet 1 inches. So, does that make sense, or?
Yes, I just have a question. My memory from walking the site is that there's a wall between the parking lot and this property.
Yeah, retaining wall, right.
Right. Where, where is that?
So, that big, this big black line is the retaining wall? And the property line is on the outside face of that wall. So, the retaining wall is on the proposed project side.
And the retaining wall measures how?
It varies. It measures between 14 and 16 inches, depending on where you measure it. And it's something that we're looking into as well, what it might take to revise it as part of the project.
That's the thickness of the wall or the height of the wall?
That's the thickness of the wall.
So, the 6 foot 1 separation is reduced by the 18 inches of the retaining wall?
That's correct. But for the purposes of egress and service along this pathway, it's been reviewed by the trash vendor, and it's, it meets all of the requirements from the building code for safe access to that stair and the rear of the property.
So, it's only like, the actual pathway is only like 4 foot 6?
That's correct. So, you'll see that, that same setback does turn the corner here facing 78 Thorn Dyke Street. But in this case, the outer wall at the ground floor and upper floor are aligned all the way up the building. So, that is at a 6 foot 1 inch setback until we reach the stair where we're at a 5 foot 1 inch setback along the face of the stair to the property line. And again, the property line is on the further side of the retaining wall, so the retaining wall is within that setback area. And then, we jog by an additional 3 feet to get to the wall that separates the garage entry from the landscaped area that sits in between the proposed project and 78 Thorn Dyke Street. So, here, we're at 8 feet 1 inches along this area. And you'll notice in the very corner here, right above where that column is indicated, is where we have the proposed site transformer location, which has adequate access from Thorn Dyke Street and is consistent with other locations that the utility provider has approved on other projects in Brookline.
But how does that affect visibility?
It, it does, it does not.
It's on the other side of the driveway. The transformer is located, you know, the setback from the property line there you said is 8 feet 1 inches?
That's correct.
And then, between, are we going to have any barrier between the column, running the column with the wall, or is that just?
So, we, we can't have any permanent barrier there so that the utility provider could access the transformer, but we're allowed to do low planting and landscaping to be able to screen the transformer. One thing that we wouldn't want to do is install any sort of really tall planting in that location that would otherwise impede sightlines up Thorn Dyke Street for drivers exiting the garage onto Thorn Dyke Street.
What's, what's done to dampen the noise of a transformer? I don't know how much that generates.
No.
Doesn't?
Well.
Minimal?
It doesn't, in our experience, it doesn't impact the project at all.
Great.
And the setbacks along Thorn Dyke Street, you'll notice they taper from the corner that's closest to the neighborhood until you end up at the intersection of Harvard Street and Thorn Dyke Street where they become zero. We haven't changed the setbacks from, along this face of the building facing Thorn Dyke Street from the last presentation that we had, had shown you.
So, can you go over those again?
Yeah, I definitely can. And so, in this location, we have, we're showing to about like half an inch right now on our dimensions, but for the purposes of providing whole numbers that are consistent, I'll stick with whole numbers here for a second. So, we're providing 8 feet and 11 inches at the furthest corner here where we're, we're at the very outside corner of the building. And that tapers down to roughly 6 feet, and then down to just about 3 feet until 2 and 1 foot 6, and then eventually 0 as you run along the edge of the property.
So, in terms of the building footprint, it has shrunk by how much?
I don't have the exact square footage of it has shrunk by.
Oh, it's included in the multiple.
What's that? Including the upper floors. I'd, I'd rather look at that number and provide it separately versus misquoting it here.
Okay, well, why don't we go over some questions? Lark, would you like to ask any additional questions about the current plan as just presented?
Well, if you're going to recalculate the whole square footage of the building, it would be helpful for you to also tell us what the resulting FAR is, once you've done that.
Sure.
I think the previous design was about?
2.6.
2.6, okay. And, and the FAR for this site is 1, as I recall, allowed by zoning.
Mm-hmm.
So, it'd be helpful to understand the difference.
Sure.
And again, just to confirm, the height of the building designed has not changed.
That's correct.
Okay.
Chris?
So, the parking space is a 10 total now, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I think you need to go over at some point the entire zoning table that you got in, in the drawing, C1C. I think there's some, there are various inconsistencies in that table as well as the changes that you've made.
Which table exactly you're referring to, Chris, in the?
C1C, it's called. So, I don't think it's in.
Is that in our waiver?
Well, it's in one of the earlier sets.
It's really a drawing.
Okay.
It's, it's like this.
And I, I think also for the waiver list that they gave us, that will have to be modified as well.
That's correct.
For the next meeting.
The other question I got, I have is the red exterior until brick, you referred to it as brick. Is it a brick facing, or is it a full brick and cavity and concrete block wall behind?
Well, it's, it's a brick and cavity construction system. It's not, it's only, it would only be concrete or steel backup for the podium level, and then it would be wood frame above that as the backup to the system. But it is, it is a full brick.
Right, okay, full 4 inches of brick. And then, the structure from back on the upper floors is wood frame?
That's correct.
Construction? We've had some question about the wood frame construction. Followed an article that I'm sure you read in the Globe about some recent files. Would you care to comment on that at all?
I can comment on what we're proposing in this project as it relates to the codes that govern how these types of projects get built. I am familiar with the article that you're referring to and, and familiar with the determinations that have come about regarding the projects that were discussed in that article, but I don't know firsthand what the full findings are on those projects, so I don't want to talk about them specifically. But with regard to this project, this building will be fully NFPA 13 compliant. And what that means is it'll have the full system that's required by the International Building Code and by the International Fire Code to be able to provide the adequate level of protection. That's been determined as being adequate by the governmental agencies that issue those codes. All of our construction UL ratings for our assemblies, they're all spelled out in our construction documents, and we need to meet all of those requirements in order for the project even to get its building permit. All of the separation distances have been calculated and met accordingly with regard to window openings that are near abutting property lines or facing other structures. And so, with all of those systems combined, we're comfortable with the level of, of safety that this building will provide.
So, it includes full sprinkling and full alarm system?
Yeah.
And then, I'll make a note that one of those projects that were in the Globe was in fact under construction.
Right, that was the issue, that those systems were not in place yet because the building was being constructed.
But I believe, I believe the other one, I believe, that's irrelevant, but I believe the other one was a, a luxury building. I don't know if that's the one that, that was also relevant. I know one of the buildings at least had full sprinklers and all of the safety bells and whistles. I know that there is subsequent to those events reconsideration of the standards in Massachusetts for the fire code, because that system of building, the, what is called podium, podium with wood on top, has been problematic. My question to you is, and maybe Mr. Engler knows this, is whether or not you are aware of any changes or pending changes in the fire code that could affect, that if enacted at the time this were being built would affect it.
For the record, Jeff Engler for SCB, no, we are not aware of any changes to the building code. The changes you're talking about are so dramatic and so profound, it would set construction back in Massachusetts to the stone ages. Moreover, we will adhere to all state fire protection codes the same way any market rate housing does in Brookline. We're not looking for any additional leniency. We will do all that. But to suggest, do you have any concept at how expensive this building would be to do in steel as compared to wood frame? We would be asking for 50 units at least to offset that additional cost. It's so much more expensive. So, A, to answer your question, no, we're not aware of any pending building code changes. B, I don't expect any changes of that significance to happen anytime in the near or distant future.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any more questions, Chris?
No.
Okay, I have a couple of issues that I'd like to address. One is that something that has been continuously discussed in all of these meetings is some way to make the building more residential, especially on the Thorn Dyke side, and make it fit in better with the houses there. I don't see any of those changes here. Have I missed something?
Well, the entire elevation facing 78 Thorn Dyke Street, which I'm going to go to right now, it, we've made a very intentional and conscious decision to terminate the brick at the corner and to transition to a combination of lap siding and also fiber cement shingle that resembles like a wood shake you would see on a, on a residential home. And those decisions and those material transitions are intentional so that when you're inside in a, in a abutting home, or you're coming down the street and you see this facade of the building that faces the neighborhood, it has something that's, materials and appearance that's more familiar to the neighborhood than commercial, like you would otherwise see. This was something that we presented at the last hearing, and again, we had made some other revisions to the material at the tower right here, again, to feel more residential and less commercial.
Peter, beyond that.
Excuse me, Jeff. The conversations we'd had did have to do with the Thorn Dyke facing itself. I do appreciate what you're saying about the back. Now, Mr. Engler.
Yeah, respectfully, we met at your request with the town's peer-review consultant, who's a professional architect with many, many years of experience. And I don't want to steal the planning staff's thunder, but they were at that meeting. I also don't represent speaking for Mr. Boomer, but the takeaway from anybody was at that meeting was that he was very happy with this design and had no additional changes and thought we had met what they had asked for. So, I mean, the design is the design at this point in time.
I reviewed all of the transcripts in the case, so I do know that consistently so I do know that consistently something that was requested was to soften the effect of that building on Thorndike Street. I know Chris discussed it, I discussed it. We talked about bays, which may be totally impractical, but I would feel, I think it's still too institutional. And Mr. Boomer is not here.
I disagree with your case.
Yeah.
Most of the multifamily buildings in Brookline, especially the ones that are older, are all in multi-story, are all brick. And they're brick on all sides as a matter of fact. So I'm a little dubious about the Thorndike Street residential side being, looking like shingle.
No, 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 it's not what I was, yeah, I wasn't saying, I like the brick.
Yeah, so my tendency would be to continue the brick around that side. Make all four sides or three sides, I keep getting how many sides we have on this. Make them all brick rather than having that sort of faux siding on the one elevation that faces the neighborhood.
Are there, in previous
I'll leave that up to the architect.
In previous iterations, was there brick on the back? I don't remember.
In a very early version of this building, we considered brick on the back. But we realized relatively quickly that the scale of that wall was going to be difficult to control if it were to be all brick, especially facing the neighbor. And when we started to make changes to the setbacks with the bumpings of the stair and kind of some of those changes, we realized we could change the materials along that wall in a way that felt a little bit more residential and less commercial. With regard to the detailing on this actual facade and in relation to some of the questions, I do remember at the last hearing that we had some conversation about bays or other ways to possibly make this look and feel different than what it is here. In a building of this scale and size, from a design standpoint, there's kind of a, there's a, it's not spelled out in any rulebook. It's not kind of anything that's written down somewhere in that they teach you in architecture school, but there's a limit to the amount of complexity you want to introduce visually for a building that has a kind of simple and clean aesthetic. So we've made a specific choice with the material at the retail base because it's related to the program inside. We've chosen brick because it feels contextual, it feels consistent with other multifamily buildings in Brookline. And we've set back the upper floor and changed the material of the upper floor to create some more vertical articulation and visual interest along this facade. As far as the actual detail, that next level, the detail that layers on top of this, we've introduced a ripped core building at the ground floor of the building that relates to pedestrian activity along the sidewalk and kind of creates a base for the building. We've introduced a solder course that separates that core building from the brick at the second and third floors. And we've adjusted the position of the corners line, the heavy corners, to be at the top of the brick, again to lower that perceived visual height of the building as you're walking along it or looking at it from the surrounding neighborhood. And the decision that we made several meetings ago to take the last third of the elevation and to create that angle and to set that back to increase the setback along Thorndike Street does also change the perception of the mass as you're moving along Thorndike Street as well. It starts to open up as you get to the residential neighborhood. So we've, we've made changes and manipulated this elevation in a way that responds to the intent of those comments, but we've intended to do that in a way that also doesn't sacrifice the design intent that we're setting out with here.
So one of
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to move on to doors.
What about the material at the facade here, this material, what is that?
So we're still studying options right now. There are a couple of new systems that have just come onto the market that we're investigating and they're more of a veneer type of system that's hung on clips that sits against the base. But we don't, we don't at this point know exactly what that material is going to be.
Have you looked at precast material masonry, precast masonry?
We haven't yet, but it's something that we'll consider.
I would, I would think that would be the most appropriate thing myself, but go ahead.
And I was going to add, I had a similar reaction to the rear of the building. In your previous design, as you noted, you had provided for brick for the stair. And I think that provided a sort of a visual break in that long wall. I don't know how to solve the problem, but I also have a reaction that now it is sort of monolithic. And so I just ask you
So are you saying part of that rear wall could, wall facing Thorndike, could be brick? Part of it could be brick?
The wall, the wall facing the home.
The home could be partly brick?
Perhaps, yeah, yeah. Exactly, exactly. Your new design, I find, you know, as I said, monolithic is the word that comes to mind. So the previous design, as I said, I believe you had brick for the stair.
We did investigate trying to use color as a way to maintain some of that visual separation as well. We kind of, we landed on a color that was more of a tone on tone against the lap siding behind it so that we weren't introducing too many new elements to the facade and so that we also weren't trying to mimic or mirror the color of the brick itself. But I think whether it is brick or it's a color difference here, there are opportunities even through detailing as well to create more of a visual break at the stair by adding either some corner boards and changing the color at this location to, in a way that breaks down the scale even a little bit more greater than it is right here.
Well, and also what I'm noticing is you lose the benefit of having the visual impact of the height reduced when you lose that distinction between the lower floors and that upper floor that you get around the rest of the building. And that, that's kind of nice and I think important, yeah, that, I mean, that has
Right, so you're talking
major impact. And you kind of lose it from that angle when you don't have the distinction between the lower floors and that upper floor. So just food for thought.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you go to the floor plan of the first floor again? I have one more comment. There was a suggestion at one point that perhaps the entrance to the commercial space, be pulled back just a bit so that you have freestanding columns here, which would increase the sightlines coming down Thorndike Street for people tuning into Harvard. Did you have any thoughts about that?
Yes, well, actually Scott, our traffic engineer, is going to talk about the discussions that occurred around that intersection about the proposed changes at that intersection that would address that issue without changing the footprint of the building as it's proposed here.
Well, I think that was not the only reason for changing the building. I think that Mr. Hussey may have had other reasons in mind, i.e. breaking things up a bit when adding those columns there and moving the building back, so.
Say that again.
You didn't want it just for sightlines, as I recall. You thought it would look better as well.
No, not necessarily.
Oh, well, I did, but that's thrown out now, okay.
Sorry about that. We should check our notes together.
Except that's illegal. All right. One of the things I really do have a problem with now that we know what it's going to look like is the mesh that's going to be in the windows and in the garage door. I have seen it at Marion Street and it looks, I think it's very jarring to look through and just see all those cars parked there. You look right into a garage, you have a lovely, on one side, you have a lovely foyer, meeting people, very modern. And then on the other side, you just have all this metal and certainly non-residential stuff. So I see it's also in the windows, which means that people walking by are going to look to their left and say, oh, cars. So it's effectively a parking lot on the first floor rather than part of the building. So I'm hoping that the mesh can be, first, what can be, what are the other options for the door? Because I really think that is problematic. And maybe we could go back to your slide of Marion Street.
Will you? I'm sorry, go ahead, finish up.
And is anything possible for the windows?
If you do make that garage door solid material, then you'll have to put in more ventilation openings on the other sides.
Or larger equipment.
Right, well, yes, but it's, I mean, I'm sorry, it's hideous. Just, it is. And I think none of the other projects that we've had in Brookline have suggested those mesh doors. And I think that
Actually, there are several other projects in Brookline that do have mesh doors and also grills on windows on the ground floor level. One of the things I will comment on is in Europe in particular, I've seen a lot of more decorative looking grills and that might be something you might explore. And I certainly think that if it's in black, it makes a big difference.
So that feels finished.
Well, it feels finished and it disappears more and it looks more formal. It doesn't look as kind of industrial.
Well, fine, that's for the windows, I agree, that could be a fix, but I just don't see it here. I mean, I think the building is enough of an assault on Thorndike Street without that. And while I'm very pleased with a lot of the changes that have been made, I think that that would not be that difficult to change and would change the aesthetic for the neighbors instead of just always looking into the garage.
So you'd rather have them have an exhaust system?
Well, what is done in other buildings?
Excuse me?
Is it through the roof? Yeah, where would it exhaust?
It'd exhaust through the side walls of the garage. So it's not like it's ugly, it's going to be noisy.
Well, so
Okay, can I interject for one second? I understand you don't like the door. I mean, maybe, I don't think we're going to, you're on record as saying you don't like how it looks and we understand that. I don't think we're going to come up with a solution tonight. Perhaps in the condition we come back with three or four different options that we present to the planning department or whomever and, you know, we come to an agreement on a door prior to getting a building permit. I mean, this honestly, 40B is for schematic level detail. We're not talking about garage doors and things of that nature. I'm not trying to diminish it, I understand it's important, but it's not customarily done as part of the comprehensive permit. We understand it's important and we're telling you that we'll provide additional options if you want to write as much into the permit, but we're not changing the whole mechanical system in the garage for an aesthetic reason of the door. We're just not doing that.
Well, as I recall, even at our last meeting, you were saying there were various types of doors that could be put in because it was something that the neighbors asked. So I don't know what those options are. You do know what those options are. And maybe we could go over them now or at a later
Well, we don't have them now. We've proposed a door, you don't like it, it's clear. So we'll try to come up with a couple of different options that but what I'm saying is, I don't think the garage door is the linchpin to the, you know, the board's vote. So I'm saying, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, but I am a little bit in saying, give us a little time. Mr. Hussey's had a couple of thoughts on some of other, these are some of the details on a building that are important but typically get decided upon. I mean, there's all sorts of different implications. What I'm telling you is, we understand you don't like it. Peter has access to lots of different ideas and designs. We can figure out an appropriate way to share with you a whole bunch and come up with the design that will be more satisfactory to the town.
I would appreciate that. Okay, so this is just plain mechanics. With the 18-foot setback facing the neighbor, 78 Thorndike?
The eight-foot setback or?
18 inches, sorry. The increased setback, that would be nice. The increased setback, how far does that actually go in relation to the person's house?
So let me see if I can find that.
I think the house was five feet from the property line?
You know, that's, that's not what I mean.
You know, you're talking about the length of that setback.
Right, so does it, does it affect the porch? Does it affect, you know, one-third of it? Or what does it really improve?
So what it ends up, I'm going to show you two different views to try to capture the spirit of this. So I don't know that they'll directly answer your question in a way that would be satisfactory, but starting with this view, you'll notice that really the front corner of the building here on Thorndike Street is roughly in the same plane or line as the front of the porch at 1st 78 Thorndike Street. So I'm going to go to the plan now to be able to try to describe a little more closely what that means. Let's go back here. So here, so again, that corner, what you're, what's being obscured by this tree in front of 78 Thorndike Street is the porch bump out at the ground floor. And below the cursor here is the corner of our building, right? So they're just about in the same plane. That setback extends all the way back past the bump out at the ground floor on 78 Thorndike Street and past the midpoint of really the roof of that facade facing our project until it hits the stair here. So the rear, about the rear third to half of the home at 78 Thorndike Street is past the extent of that increased setback that we discussed. But it's mostly in this front corner here that you see, really in the first half of the building, you see that sort of relationship that we develop.
Now, moving it in 18 inches, why does that require getting rid of three parking spaces? Just do the arrangement for me.
Sure, so, yeah, I mean, effectively what ends up happening is we get all of our utility rooms here. And one of the changes that I didn't discuss actually that I should have mentioned is that we did widen the garage door as well.
Oh, good. How wide is it now?
In response to peer reviewers' comments. It's now about 20 feet now. So by relocating the utility rooms and by widening the garage door, it starts to have a ripple effect through a footprint as tight and as small as this. And when we look at the maneuvering within the garage and we look at the layout and use of these spaces, the lift spaces versus the other standard parking spaces, we realize that it would be more, it would be more appropriate to combine the lift spaces into one location. And we also needed to recover some square footage to be able to locate some of these other trash rooms and to kind of figure out how this piece would come together here. And in shuffling these pieces around, we ended up losing the three parking spaces that were really all driven by changes that resulted from increasing the setback right here and widening the store. So it kind of just has that ripple effect through the plan.
How wide is the curb cut now at the driveway?
That's on, that'll be discussed as part of
Oh, parking, okay. Is there any way to fit in space for more than five or six bikes?
So the anecdotal response to that question is that many of the residents in a project such as this, in a location such as this, who don't own a car but have a bike, own bikes that are, they spent $2,000 or $3,000 on and they're not going to want to lock them up in the garage. They take them up to their units. So we've heard that from property managers at most, if not all, of our projects that are in urban locations. So right now, as it stands, the five to six bikes in that location is about as much as we think we can fit within the garage itself. And we're expecting that a lot of the residents will, if they have bikes, will want to actually keep them up in their units themselves.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now, thanks.
Sure. So before I turn it over to traffic, I just want to show you briefly some of the videos that were taken of the lift system. So that's a question that's been asked multiple times at this hearing. So the first video we're going to look at is of a vehicle pulling into a garage and then actually backing onto the lift system. And as we discussed previously, if you have a stack of six effective spaces, there's always one space that's open so that the lift can shuffle cars around and you can access them.
Full-size CD?
Yes, Alexis, full-size. And they actually take
S and B as well. You can fit S and B in there as well. So then you get the size of the car. We actually went to San Francisco to have a tour of the company and we actually personally took these videos ourselves. They also have a website that we can give you. Also, they now have represented the works in Boston, who if you have any questions, would be more than happy to help you with your We have the, we have the next video, you can actually see the measurement of the sound waves.
In decimals.
In decimals.
And that was Mr. Danny Dinesh and Ms. Kates talking? No, not Ms. Kates. Okay. Thank you.
So here is an individual retrieving their car from the system. And you'll note in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see, you know, though there is a tray that's available to be for a car itself, there would be, one of these spaces would not be occupied by a vehicle at all times to allow the system to move the cars. It's up, goes, gets in the car.
Why didn't you hear the door close?
Uh, it was, you did hear the door close.
Yeah, couldn't hear it back here.
Yeah, I don't know.
We'll do the, yeah, well, you said you had some noise measurements, we can do that in a little bit.
So here, I'll just bring that, that's the last.
So, Peter, those, those three spaces below the lift, those are, one of those is not occupied?
Uh, that's correct, yeah. So in a stack of six, you could have five vehicles.
Okay, thanks.
So in our case, we have a bank of four spaces that are doubled, so we have seven lift spaces because one of those is not occupied.
Gotcha.
All right, so what you're looking at here is a sound measurement that's being taken as the system is in operation from, let's say, about between eight and 10 feet away from the system itself.
What does that translate into, into something we might know, 29 decibels?
So, right now, my speaking voice is probably varying between 75 and 8 decibels in this room here. If we were sat around a conference table and people were speaking, there's normally to each other, that hovers right around 70 decibels, as an example.
Hi, my name is David Dinesh, I'm with the development team. When we went to visit this company in San Francisco, we went to several projects. One project in particular had a fan on in the garage, and the fan was louder than the actual parking structure. So we had to actually go to a different site because, for the decimal test, because we couldn't do it at that one, because the fan was much louder than the actual parking system was operating.
Was the fan an exhaust fan for the?
It was an exhaust fan, it was an exhaust fan, yes. So the exhaust fans, as Polly mentioned and most people know, are much louder than any of these systems. Also, one thing that I'd like to mention is, the .3 decimals that we saw on the video, these parking structures were gonna be on the far side of the property that has, next to the garage, the back of the parking system will be touching the garage doors, which will be, have two walls that would be facing the parking lot of Starbucks. And it's very far away from the garage openings on the other side. So you won't even be able to hear them if you walk by, probably. Thank you.
Chris, do you have anything?
No.
Park.
Good evening, for the record, Scott Thornton with Vineson Associates, traffic consultants for the project. When we were here last, in July, we had a plan for improvements at the intersection of Thorndike Street and Harvard Street that consisted generally of bump outs or curb extensions on the Thorndike Street or on the site side of Harvard Street. So just on this corner, directly adjacent to the project, and then the corresponding corner, as that's, that's a, that's a common practice when you're constructing curb extensions, is to do them in pairs. We had also looked at removing one on-street parking space located in this area where it's gored out, and we had, at the time, we had proposed one or possibly two metered spaces in this area in conjunction with a loading zone between the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM. And we, I think the ZBA had requested that we get to the Transportation Board and get their input on these changes. And we did that on the, on July 20th, and in general, the Transportation Board was in favor of, or in support of the project and the proposed changes. There were, they were definitely in favor of adding the two spaces in the area of the loading, of the present curb cut, which would be, again, converted to a loading zone. They were in favor of the loading zone change, and they were in favor of removing the parking space on this side of Harvard Street. So all the changes in this area, they were in favor of. They had some other changes or some other recommendations, things like a transportation monitor board, or things like posting of transit schedules, which we had agreed to do. And their preference was for a transportation monitor board, which, again, we don't, we don't think that that's necessary for this project because you get a lot better information right on your, on your smartphone these days. And then, in addition, if you're, if you're at the site and you're, you're waiting for information on, on the green line, by the time you get the notification of when the, when the train is there, it's too late for you to get there. So, things like the T-Tracker app or, for your smartphone are much more appropriate. They had also made some recommendations about the driveway, or the sidewalk across the driveway, that it should be at a, at a level consistent with the sidewalk, so that if you're coming down the side, coming down on the sidewalk, walking along Thorndike Street, you don't have to ramp down crossing the driveway, you just maintain a constant elevation across that driveway. And that's, that is part of the, part of the proposal for the project. The main item that, that we had some disagreement on was the curb extensions themselves. Initially, we had proposed a design that was really consistent with the peer consultant recommendations, which called for curb extensions on one side of Harvard Street and, and the location, or the, the presence of apex wheelchair ramps, which allow the crosswalk to be pushed further into the intersection. And when you move the crosswalk further into the intersection, you're able to move the stop bar further into the intersection as well. So that improves the site distance for vehicles that are parked at the stop bar. Now, that's not saying that people, and I think we've had this discussion before, where people aren't necessarily gonna stop at the stop bar and execute their turn from that position. They're most likely going to stop at the stop bar, proceed out into the, into the intersection until they get to a point where there's no obstruction, they're not obstructing travel flow, and then they can wait for a gap and exit out. So, but, but one of the things that the board requested was a separation of the wheelchair ramps, so instead of having one ramp on each corner, there would be two. One ramp would serve both of these crosswalks, the Harvard Street and the Thorndike Street crosswalk. And as it is shown on this graphic, this revised option has separate wheelchair ramps. And the benefit to that is, it aligns the crosswalk a little better with the, with the sidewalk on Harvard Street. Now, you're not gonna get the same type of alignment on Thorndike Street, but the majority of the pedestrians are moving on the Harvard Street corridor. So that's one item. And the other item is, the board requested a review or requested the installation of the curb extensions on the corresponding corners on the other side of Harvard Street. And, you know, with the idea being that this allows, it shortens the pedestrian crossing distance a little more than just the, just the one set of curb extensions would do. And, you know, with all these, with all these improvements, with the curb extensions, you're not, you're not impinging on the traveled way at all, you're not really restricting the flow of traffic, you're making use of dead space that's currently there, that can't be used. So you can't, for instance, in this area, there's not, there's not parking once you get, there's one space in this area, but you can't park up to the corner of the intersection. Same on this side, you can't park up to the corner of the, of the intersection. So these, these are not, these curb extensions are not, are not removing any parking from use, they're not, as you can see, they're not extending out into either the bike lane or the travel lane, so they're not restricting travel on the main line on Harvard Street. The previous, we prepared this, this exhibit really as a, as a schematic to, and provided it to the Transportation Department for them to weigh in on the design. So we haven't had a chance to really design it, and really at this level, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not appropriate to do a design. But the previous, the previous plan that I showed that only had extensions on one side, showed that buses, you know, a large truck would, would be able to make the turn from Thorndike Street, the right turn from Thorndike Street onto Harvard Street without encroaching into the other travel direction on Harvard Street, and similar with the design, or with the truck coming from Harvard Street up into Thorndike Street. So we would, we would assume that this, these designs would be, would be able to accommodate the trucks as well. I think as far as responsibility for this goes, you know, the applicant has indicated that they're in favor of making the, making the construction or designing the extensions on this side of Harvard Street. And it's, it's, it's an amenity really for them to do these extensions, kind of increases their sidewalk presence and, and improves the site distance coming out of Thorndike Street. I think, so, so to then do the opposite side, or the corresponding side of Harvard Street, I think is, is, you know, it's not appropriate for this project, given it's, it's not a, it's not a 50-unit development, it's, it's 17 units, it's, it's, this is already more traffic mitigation than I think it was provided for the 420 Harvard Street project, for some of the other projects. And, you know, I think it's, so we provided this to the traffic department, I'm not sure that.
Sorry, now, in terms of what you are potentially willing to adopt the cost of, does it include the one by the gas station across on Thorndike Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's basically on the site side of Harvard Street.
Okay.
If I could, sorry, for the record, Jeff Angler, just make one point, I think it's important, is the board asked us to meet with the Transportation Board, which I wouldn't say we did reluctantly, but we said, hey, wait a sec, you know, you have a peer review consultant, what if we get feedback that's different from what your own peer reviewer? And to an extent, that happened a little bit, I would say they were in agreement on most of the stuff, but there was some difference. So we took the initiative to get the Transportation Board, your peer review consultant, and our traffic engineer, all in the same room, what was it, about two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, to talk through everything and say, what is everybody comfortable with? And this plan reflects, now I'm not, I know your traffic peer reviewer will speak, but it basically reflects the consensus of the group, so I think that's important to note.
So is it correct that this exact design, which I know is true, was not reviewed by the Transportation Board, but part of the changes on it are in reaction to its comments?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, so I think in terms of what's fair and appropriate for the, for the project, you know, the applicant has, has, is willing to do one side of the intersection, it's just a question of, of really what the, what the board's, what the board's preference might be.
And just for clarification purposes, did the Transportation Board make a recommendation regarding whether the applicant should be doing construction on all four, all four corners?
I think their, I don't have the exact letter in front of me, but I think their recommendation was that the ZBA request the applicant look at the redesign of, of the intersection for, to include the curb extensions on the other side.
Okay, thanks.
Polly, is there something you want to add at this point about, or should we have Mr. Fitzgerald up?
Well, I don't know, I think Mr. Fitzgerald was really here to answer any questions that you have. Is that correct? So, I would just make, excuse me, a comment that we, we did have a meeting of all the different parties, and it was very good that they all finally agreed on a plan. I think what's not agreed to, which still needs to be worked out, is who pays for what. My last conversation with Peter Ditto was it's his preference that he pay for the entire design of all four bump outs, and then the, and also put in the cross, paint the crosswalks and put in the signage, pay for all that, and that the applicant then paid for the construction of the four bump outs themselves. However, I think this, they're still in negotiations, and this is something that would be covered by a condition that you would impose about, you would specify exactly who would pay for what. And I think we should give them some time to continue to work with Peter Ditto on what's, what's the best outcome in terms of payment. But I think everybody agrees that this is the project that will be designed, or the traffic mitigation that will be designed and will be implemented in order to make sure that there's good traffic visibility and that the mitigation measures are appropriate.
Polly, did you have something to say? Oh, you acted like you were about to say something. I had some questions about what is contemplated and not contemplated in adoption from the Transportation Board's recommendations, many of which you've addressed.
Mm-hmm.
So, the financial responsibility is to be worked out. I think the issue of the loading dock, having normal metered parking during non-loading hours has been worked out. I'm not going to deal with the snow removal and things like that. So, one of the comments was this, the ZBA request a redesign that we, they're asking that we do this, that we request a redesign of the location of the crosswalk on Thorndike Street to the original location because it will better help pedestrian path. I don't know what that means in this context. What is the original location? Does anyone?
Well, I, I'm not.
Oh, Jim knows, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Fitz, yeah, maybe you guys can double team this one.
If you will.
Sure.
Right, so, so, Jim Fitzgerald from Environmental Partners, a traffic peer reviewer. The, we brought up the topic of curb extension, curb extensions or bump outs at the intersection here with the intent of, for several intents. First, to improve visibility from the side street so vehicles aren't protruding into the intersection further while stopped in the middle of a crosswalk. Also, to improve pedestrian accommodations, shortening the crossing distances, just making it much more pleasant for pedestrians. Having to do with the, the wheelchair ramp placement that was discussed earlier, we had reviewed, we had seen earlier concepts of this plan with the intent of trying to push the crosswalk and the stop bar a little closer to the intersection, whether or not there were, would be one apex ramp on the corner or two, would have to be something that would be designed out, town's preference to have two, that's certainly fine. So what our intent was to try to provide the vehicles coming up from Thorndike approaching Harvard with a place that they can stop a little closer and see oncoming traffic without stopping in the middle of a crosswalk. One of the benefits of our of the benefits of our meeting that we had a week or two ago with, with the whole group was to hear the town's preferences for, for crosswalk locations and try to come up with a compromise. The plans that are shown from a schematic standpoint appear to be reasonable. There are certainly, you know, this is a concept, things have to be designed out. Small things like consistent ramp widths and, you know, the, the design of the ramps, all these things get worked out with, as it's engineered out. As far as the, the existing stop bar location, what that, I believe the new location that's shown in this plan is slightly closer to the intersection than existing. And it just comes down to a balance between all the needs. Trying to maintain a continuous path of travel for pedestrians walking along that eastern side of Harvard without having to walk too far out of their way to get to the crosswalk, all the while keeping in mind that there are vehicles approaching from Thorndike that will, and will stop where they have to in order to see oncoming traffic. So in a perfect world, the placement would be dependent on that compromise between having a good place for that stop bar, which falls just outside of the crosswalk, all the while not inconveniencing the pedestrians. And so all of that would come into play during the design process as far as what that exact balance would be, as well as all the ADA requirements on the wheelchair ramps all have to be designed out.
Okay, thank you. There was one comment they made too, that the apex handicap location, or rather, that those ramps be removed and that ADA compliant wheelchair ramps be substituted.
Yes.
So can you comment on that?
Yes. So the apex ramps was, were the single ramps that were originally shown on the plan. There are some conditions and instances where they are considered acceptable. Again, it comes down to a balancing act and trying to figure out what the best placement is for the ramps and the crosswalks. All these things come about during the engineered design phase of the project, I'm sure. So with regards to the two ramps on a corner, they're certainly feasible to fit on each of these, on each of these corners. The, the details of them would need to be worked out, again, to comply to ADA, but there are variations. There aren't necessar, there isn't necessarily a clean cut right or wrong way of doing it. You must meet ADA requirements, but there are some variations in what could end up by being. And that would all be dependent on the town designing or reviewing the design.
Okay, thank you. Chris, do you have any questions on, comments on this right now?
No. No, I don't.
Lark?
No.
Okay. Oh, but I do want to say that I agree with the recommendations, and I assume you have no problem with developer that the driveway entrances not be depressed and should be even with the rest of the sidewalk.
Right. That's what I was talking about before with the sidewalk.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I have to say, I agree with you about the real-time transit monitor. Seems a little excessive.
Yes, I wanted to also comment on the fact that we did have, actually, prior to the transportation meeting, we had a meeting with Cliff Bomer, who's our design peer reviewer, and the development team, and Peter Bartosz, the architect. And they showed the revisions that they had made to the building, which is what you've seen tonight. And Cliff was very pleased with the design changes. He felt the building was much improved and that they'd probably gone just about as far as they could go with the setbacks. So that, that was the gist of what he had to say. And I was going to say, you probably want to hear some public comment tonight.
Yeah, in just a minute. Now, Mr., were you going to read Mr. Ditto's memo relating to this, or just summarize it?
Well, it's, it just summarizes what's been said, really. That he had determined that the design for the bump outs is acceptable and that he recommends that it be constructed. And he said that his department would offer to do design services for the curb extensions in the intersection as well as install pavement markings and signs.
So it sounds like under that, that he's willing to accept the responsibility for payment of installing pavement markings and signs?
Yes.
That's how I read that.
And, and he would pay for designing it. But again, as I mentioned, I think this is still something that's being negotiated. And we meet again on September 18th, and by that time, we could have worked it out and incorporated it into a condition, a proposed condition, of course.
Okay, before we get to the public, I would like to take a five-minute break.
Okay.
So we are temporarily adjourned for five minutes. If you want to stretch your legs.
Is there a bathroom?
Yes.
Do you have a secret bathroom?
It's not really a secret bathroom.
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 Labor's Day.
Yeah.
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 Okay, we will reconvene this hearing. It is 8:23. So if everyone in the audience is ready, we will start. And now we would like to invite members of the public to come up and give comment on the issues that are under discussion today, specifically the redesign of the building and the traffic calming methods that have been suggested. If you decide you want to say something, please come up to the podium, give your name and spell it if the court reporter would like, and your address, and your comments. Would anyone like to speak? Wow. Oh, okay.
It probably would be good for people to line up and that saves some time.
I'm Joyce Juswaki, town meeting member from Precinct Nine, and I live up the street on Winchester Street. And I really appreciate all the accommodations you've made about the setbacks and, and changing the facade a bit. So take that as a real positive because the side of the house facing the abut is really ugly. I mean, can't we have something? I, I don't know. I'm not a builder. I'm just a looker. I mean, I, you know, I moved into a really beautiful neighborhood, and that's really ugly. The other thing is that I know you're saying it's 30 decibels. I know you're saying that, that car thing is way in the front. But when you're lying in bed at night, in the middle of the night, and something goes on and then goes off, I mean, my neighbor has the quietest air conditioner compressor I've ever heard. But when it goes on and off all night, I can hear it. So I'm not satisfied with the audio of the video you played and telling me it's way in the front and everything. Those are my two basic concerns. But really, the side abutting 78 Thorndike is very unpleasant looking.
And Mr. Hussey has a question.
Could I ask you a question? Your neighbor's compressor, is that on the roof or is it on the ground?
It's on the ground.
It's on the ground, yeah.
And it's, it's 14 feet from my house.
Well, I can believe that. But when you're on the roof like this, the sound is this line of sight thing. And so I really think-
Right. This one's on the floor, but, but so is that. And don't forget, you're in a building, so you've got echoes. You know, it's, I just don't-
I think there's a miscommunication. I think Joyce is talking about the automobiles-
Yeah, I'm talking about the-
And not the air conditioning.
Right. I mean, it's, it's enclosed, the echoes all around in the building. I think it's empty.
Um, Steve, can I have another sentence?
I'll spell it. J O Z and zebra, W I C and cat, K I. I'm spelling.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hurskovici?
Hi, I'm Steve Hurskovici. I live at 87 Thorndike Street. That's H E R S C O V I C I. I have two, I have a question also about the garage, not so much the stacker, but the door itself when it goes up and down. Do you know what the decibel level of that is since it's right on the street at the ground level?
This is Peter Bartosz from Q3. We have not specified a door at this time, so I don't have a specific decibel level. And it sounds like that's something we'll be representing. But we'll review all of that with the planning board as we go through.
Excuse me, if you're not talking to be heard by the microphone, please don't speak. If you do want to say something, that's fine.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Because as somebody who lives right across the street from the, basically from where the garage door will be, I think it's important, especially in the summertime, to know that.
Maybe we could arrange a field trip to Marion Street for this gentleman to, the reason being, the garage door is very quiet there. Now, the garage door here may end up being a different style, but mechanically, it should function the same. And I'm sure my client would be happy to have you come over and take a look at that. But it is pretty quiet.
Also, people living upstairs, our tenants, who is loud, and they would be able to see, they would be more uncomfortable. So, you know, I might as well, I want to have a loud garage open for our tenants and for our neighbors.
Well, I appreciate that. I would still like to know what it would be. Thank you. And then the other question that I have has to do with the traffic, and that is, as a bicyclist, I am concerned about the bump outs because, you know, in my experience and my observation, what that tends to do, and this is more a question for the traffic consultants, is, you know, you push out the stop line, which means that, you know, nobody ever stops at the stop line after they pass the driver's test. So they'll be out in the, they may be out in the crosswalks or even further, given the angles of the street. And, you know, as a bicyclist coming down, there's not a lot of room between the side, the crosswalk and the bike lane. So I, you know, I wonder to what extent that was taken into account. And then maybe to mitigate that, was there any discussion about removing the parking spot that I guess is southwest of Thorndike Street, the one that's right up on Harvard Street next to the gas station parking lot? Because, you know, sometimes if there's a, you know, a truck, or an SUV, or a van, or a dumpster there, it makes it all that much harder to see. And then cars pull out all that much further to try to see whether they can, they can go. And it just makes it more dangerous for everybody. So I don't know if there's a discussion about that, but I'm just curious about that.
Mr. Thornton, could you address the bike lane issue?
Scott Thornton with Vaness Associates. We did look at the, we did look at the dimensions of the, of the, or the physical layout of the extension where it comes up close to the bike lane. One of the, this design doesn't show it, but one thing that could be done is that extension could be pulled back a little bit. So it gives a little bit of extra space for the bicyclist. One thing we heard from the Transportation Board is, is they were looking for more parking on Harvard Street. So I don't know that, there wasn't any discussion about removing the parking space in front of the garage. And then in terms of, in terms of the site distance, you know, I think that it's, this is going to improve, this, the curb extensions do improve the site distance for, for the pedestrians and for vehicles coming out. And I think that what the, what the extension does to kind of give the impression of a narrow roadway, because it's, it's, it's a narrowed roadway there, calms traffic, reduces the vehicle speeds. So that should, you know, if you have, if traffic's moving slower, it's easier for motorists to react to bicyclists that are, that are bicycling through there. So I think all those things together are going to really improve the safety out there.
Mr. Thornton, does the, do the bump outs actually impinge on the bike lane?
No.
But it's, I understand it's nice to have a little more room for the bicyclists rather than being squeezed in.
Yeah, it's, right. And it's kind of a, you know, it's, as, as Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned, it's, it's kind of a balancing act. Because you want to provide, you want to have protection for the, with the curb extensions. You want to protect that parking lane that's there. So, and keep people further out and keep them off of the bike lane as well. So you want to try to use up as much of the parking lane as you can with the extension. But then you may also want to pull it in a little bit to give the, to give the bicyclists a little more space.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Steve, do you have something else?
Let's move on to follow up with a question. Because I was talking about cars coming from Thorndike onto Harvard, pulling out into the crosswalk and maybe into the bike lane, not so much cars on Harvard Street pinching the bicyclists. Is that, that was more the issue that I was wondering if you could address.
Sure. So, so really, in terms of vehicles coming out on Thorndike Street and being able to see the bicyclists on Harvard Street? I think that the, with the curb extensions there, that is improved, that sight line is improved. So, so the sight line for the, for the motorists coming out onto, coming out Thorndike Street, they've got a better sight triangle to go, to see further down, down Harvard Street with the extension?
I, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Shaw?
Hi, I'm Slote Shaw. I'm on Thorndike Street. When we had the meeting with the neighborhood and the developers, there was a really wonderful suggestion made to put columns so that people could see around the building, because the building is too monolithic and you can't see going out. And as somebody who drives out on Thorndike all the time, it's really difficult to see out there, and now you won't have that parking avenue that there is right now, you'll have this huge building. So the suggestion was made--
By Fred.
--by Fred, and it was a fantastic suggestion. And he said, "Put columns up so that you could see through the columns." And looking at this building, it seems absolutely difficult to see around that building, and pushing out the sight lines so that the cars extend out into the street makes a lot of problems for bikers, that was a really good point about bike riders, and for pedestrians, and there's a huge number of children who are walking there. And this seems like a real problem traffic-wise, and I've been watching the traffic a lot, thinking of how this is going to be blocked. And this solution is one that seems like one of those little models that you make that architects put on a piece of paper and build up a 3D model, and it looks okay, then you leave, and we're stuck with a really bad traffic problem of looking out. So that was my problem with the way, this doesn't seem remediated, and I thought that the column idea was brilliant. To put those columns up, you could see right through. And that also lessens the scale of the building being so massive, because it's really massive for that sight. And then the second thing was, when I was listening to the lift, there's a very high-pitched noise that was really loud, and high-pitched noises are really obnoxious. And I was wondering if there could be some soundproofing within the garage and that that would make that sound, that would be sound, there's probably soundproofing for the building for the tenants, but it would be wonderful to have soundproofing for the street.
I noticed that, too, and I wasn't sure the extent to which the high-pitched sound was actually related to the lift. Could either of the Dinesh people who were there tell us? Get up to the podium, please. And did you hear the high-pitched sound as well, and was it the first video? It may have been totally unrelated.
I really don't know what you're referring to. We have the scale right there, it was 0.3. We went to three different sites, it was all 0.3.
No, it wasn't that, it was--
So if you, if you play it again, you'll hear it. There's a loud, high-pitched noise.
And the final thing is that, you know, if you want, the board want to speak, the gentleman who works for the company, I'm more than happy to speak to him. He lives in Boston now. He moved here because there's been so many of these lifts throughout Boston that he moved from San Francisco to Boston just to do this. So if there's a problem that the sound, it wouldn't have me happy so busy doing it.
Okay, well, I think it's something we can also research.
It's a nice idea that he wouldn't have the problem, but I don't know if it's accurate.
Okay, can people talk once at a time and--
My flight, yes. Okay, so anyway, those were the concerns.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosen?
Hi, I got on the express line. I was actually behind Fred, but then they all let me go ahead. I don't know why. Anyway, hi, everybody, and I want to say to the developers, thanks for making some concessions on the design and the setbacks. I think that's helpful. It shows that things are moving in a positive direction. However, and with a capital H, however, that the design still is not working for the neighborhood. It's too monolithic. I really appreciate the comments from the board tonight, because I thought they were very right on target. I do have a comment about the bumpouts. I remember in a previous session, one of the traffic people mentioned that that would cause ponding in the street because of water drainage down Harvard. That's a downhill area, and the bumpouts would cause ponding, which is not going to help anybody cross the street, because, you know, that's, that's something to consider. The other point I wanted to consider was about the video about the mechanical car lift. There's a very high-pitched sound, and I work as a professional sound engineer, and I've done professional sound measurements. You don't use a smartphone. Those apps have been reviewed on the web, and they're problematic. They're inaccurate. You go out and you spend a couple hundred bucks and you buy a professional sound pressure level meter, and then you really get an idea of what the sound is like. But with high-pitched sounds, they are generally more difficult to register on sound pressure level meters, and it depends on how you're actually measuring the sound. The problem with the smartphone apps is the quality of the mics and also the user. If they're not actually directing the microphones at the sound source, but if the mics are facing you and you've got a video, you know, in the selfie mode where the camera is using the other camera, your phone, and it's taking a picture of the lift, well, the mics are actually facing you. So it's going to give a, an inaccurate reading. That's all I'm saying, and that, you know, it would be helpful to have somebody come up with a, it's called an ANSI rating, where they would just, you know, have a benchmark rating, and it's a standard in the industry. I don't know why it's so difficult to come up with. We've discussed other lift systems in other meetings, and those statistics are forthcoming. Those specifications are right out there. And as I said in our previous system, the sound level was 100 decibels, and they said that was the best in the world. So I'd be very interested to hear what this company says. The other thing was that a speaking voice, and you can check on all the sound pressure level charts, is, is, at the loudest, speaking voice is 65 dB. When you go up that scale, it's a logarithmic scale, so that means that things get exponential. And so that, if you go to 75 dB, somebody said, "I think my voice could even be 75 dB tonight." Well, that's not likely, because 75 dB is the sound of a restaurant full of people having happy animated conversations with dishes clinking in the background, and that's quite a loud, a loud sound. And sound damage does occur at 85 dB, so it would be helpful to have that. And I agree with your comments about traffic and the bicycles, and again, I really thank the board for its insightful critique tonight. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Bartasch, could you play that first video again, just so we can see if it's noise?
I also wanted to say that I've seen these videos on the web from this company, and the sound level on this particular video is defeated. In other words, it seems to be reduced slightly. I couldn't, I couldn't hear normal sounds, like the sound of shoes walking on the pavement or the, the car door closing perceptibly. So it made me think that perhaps the sound level was defeated by a certain level of decibels, maybe 20 dB for the playback.
Thank you.
Just an observation. Thank you.
So there are multiple points in there that are worth addressing--
Sure.
--in response to that comment. The first being, the sound level that everyone in this room is hearing is coming from this laptop, and it's not meant to be a true life-accurate representation of what it's like to be standing there next to it. These are just representative videos to say, this is how we think it's, it's working and how we think, how it works. As far as the measurements and readings that were taken by the developer, they're not purported to be performed with any sort of equipment that's registered with ANSI or in performance with the standards that would be required for that sort of test. We did request that information from the manufacturer. The manufacturer is in the process of completing those tests with ANSI as a registering organization and does not currently have that test result available, so we have not been able to obtain it, and that's why we have not provided it.
When do they expect it to be done?
They didn't give us a date or a target date, and we've asked them repeatedly.
You guys can't be the first people who asked for it, though.
Which is why they decided they're going to make, why they decided to start doing this test as it is. That being said, and with regard to the, the video itself, there was a question about seeing the video again. I can play that video again. I don't know if the board wants to see, but what exactly that would be addressing with--
I just want to know what kind of sounds there are. It's possible that sound is not emitted by the machinery at all.
Can I ask one quick question? And maybe Polly would know, Kate, you might know. I'm curious as to why this is getting so much attention on this application, when how many 40Bs have been permitted in the town in the last two years that have a lift system?
Jeff, you know that's a loser.
Why?
Because something which goes in another 40B hearing does not necessarily go here.
I agree with that, but, but there's a very similar, if not more dense, closer, closer to more residential abutters, and they were all approved without even close to the level of detail my client is representing here.
You have the panel you brought. That's us. So we're the ones you got to satisfy. I hear what you're saying.
Well, Kate, you've been on many of those boards.
Yes, but what I would say is, it's possible we could deal with this as a condition in the future. It's being explored. I think it's a valid concern.
Yeah, Danny Dinesh, I'm with the development team. As my brother said, the, there's employees who work for City Lift Systems in Boston, and we can have them show you better videos and even have them come in if you'd like, because it seems like there's a lot of questions. And this video that we took, you know, I used my iPhone. It's not professional video, so it's, if there's a little squeaking sound, there are, there are people in the background, too, so don't take it, you know, to, it's just, it's more for how, how does the system work?
Frankly, I think that would be extremely helpful, and to Mr. Engler's point, I think it would answer a lot of questions going forward for 40Bs. So if that is possible, could we have them appear at the September 18 hearing?
Who are Beth Cates?
That would be fantastic. Peter, do you have anything else to add at this time? Okay. Ms. Cates, is this about the particular issue?
It's about the parking.
Oh, you can get back to it, right, oh. You've been moved to the front.
Beth Cates from 105 Center Street. I guess what I didn't see on this film is what happens, this unit has to move laterally, too, right? It's like a circle? You just showed it-- So it just moves up and down?
And left and right, not in a circle.
Okay, so if you have, you showed one car moving. So what happens when it's got five cars in it? And does it make more noise because you've got all that extra weight? And like, how does that affect the whole system? That's my question.
Yeah, so like I said, like I just said, we're just going to have the representative come next meeting and explain to you and everyone all the questions.
That would be fantastic.
Thank you. So I think we should just move on from this for tonight.
Okay, why don't we move on? Mr. Pinches?
Hi, Fred Pinches, F-R-E-D-P-I-N-C-H-E-S. Since we've kind of gotten away from the parking catastrophe, I'd like to basically go back to the corner column design here, which might mitigate the catastrophe that we have on the corner. The architect referred to it, and I don't know how seriously they looked at it, but again, I think for reasons that have already been mentioned here, sightlines and everything else down there, it might be a good idea for safety as well as for the aesthetics of the building. I'm not an architect, but this building with the corner here, even though it has a slight small curve there, it basically, I've referred to it as MCI Thorndike, since it looks like a penitentiary on most of the sides. Looking at the corner there, where you have the entrance to the retail space and the windows above it, it almost looks like the bow of a cruise ship. So another analogy that we can, you know, maybe think about, if they did have the corner and the column design, that would, particularly if it was rounded off a little bit, you would have basically two different curves on the building. You would have the short curve on the upper floors, which we got now, which again, as I say, looks, almost looks like the bow of a cruise ship and the windows on the front, and maybe a longer curve on the corner with the columns that will give you the sightlines, as well as giving you a different curve, which would kind of break up the front facade of the building, instead of having the, it is smooth a little bit, but I mean, you've still got a pretty big angle there. And this would give you two different curves, which would break it up horizontally, since you already have two different perimeters. The first three floors have got the property line perimeter, and then the top floor over there, you have a smaller perimeter, too. So you're already working with multiple dimensions or views or whatever you want to call it. So again, I think architecturally, you know, a longer curve around the corner in contrast to the shorter curve on the upper floors, MCI Thorndike. Also, the traffic consultant, I think that their data was collected based on rush hour traffic on Harvard Street, which if anybody knows, and I'm sure the neighbors could probably, you know, elaborate along with me, is often slows down. So I think that their data, based on the 85 percentile, may be less than what it usually is most of the day. And of course, higher average speeds for the 85 percent, 85 percentile would require longer sightlines, which gets back to the possibility of improving the design of the building with the column corner design and a smooth corner. Also rounding, basically taking the corner off the building, at least on the first floor, which would be basically where you would have your sidewalk and pedestrians and the whole streetscape idea. If you look at Harvard Street, which they have referred to many times of their existing buildings, down at Green Street, the Otto Pizza, you know, basically, the corner of that building is like sliced off. I mean, it wasn't sliced off, it was just designed that way. And Otto Pizza has a very nice entrance there, and right across the street, Pete's Coffee Shop, they also have a sliced-off design, so to speak, where it is not basically the angle of the design. So again, I think, you know, for consistency, precedent, whatever you want to call it, you know, I think this might be appropriate, as I said, as well as, you know, a better architectural design and increasing the safety. Also, on the question of traffic speeds, I don't know if the, any of the consultants, whether the peer review or their consultant, has done any traffic data on Thorndike Street itself. Thorndike Street, the parking on the side of the building with the, the proposed building here is no parking. So basically, traffic moves much faster going towards Harvard Street than away from Harvard Street. Because it is a smaller residential street, cars going up Harvard Street away from Harvard often have to kind of zigzag in among parked cars, slow down, get out of the way for the traffic that is coming through, which can move very quickly. Thorndike Street is practically a test route for Herb Chambers, Honda, Porsche, Mini, whatever else they've got down there that moves. And any one that goes down to Herb Chambers, one of the things that they probably want to look at is how fast can the car go, particularly when you've got a BMW or a Porsche and you're paying how much money. So we've got cars blowing up Thorndike Street, up the hill between Gibbs and Clarence Street, you know, where our family home is, and I mean, you wouldn't believe the volume of traffic, particularly in rush hour coming through, where the garage activity for this building may also be increased. So now you've got a conflict there on speed, volume, everything else. So again, it might be, if they don't already have the data, to do some speed data as well as volume data on that, because they have referred to the number of the trip generation and all that, but that's only for the building. Let's talk about the volume and the trip generation on the street itself with all the assorted activity, including the test route for Herb Chambers, not to give them free advertising, because they get enough free advertising with their cars running around all the time in the neighborhood. So again, the question of the data, I think we should need more data on that because of the safety questions. Also, an incidental question on sightline, they mentioned the transformer. These transformers are usually about six feet high, and when somebody is sitting in their car, pulling out of the garage, they are below, probably less than six feet. Most cars, the roof is like six feet, and when you're sitting in the car, you're going to be less than six feet. So again, this transformer down there might obstruct the view, and in this situation here, again, with the volume and speed of traffic on Thorndike Street, any obstruction of the view at all down there could seriously increase the, the danger on the street. So that would be my two main comments. Again, if they could seriously look at the corner design, which architecturally I think would be better aesthetically, safety, sightlines, the real data on Harvard Street, not just rush hour, which again, I don't think is represented in most of the day, as well as data on Thorndike Street, which again, looking at it quickly, nice, quiet residential street, it's a lot more than that with a lot more activity and more complicated activity that might be obvious there. So that would be my comments for the evening, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, my name is, uh, Robert Leppson, Thondike Street resident, town meeting member, precinct nine. Also a member of the, um, Diversity Inclusion Community Relations Commission, as well as the Fair Housing Committee. I've been asked by some residents of, and former residents of 45 Marion Street to read, um, a letter and some, several bullet points, speaking about sort of the management, um, that they've experienced at, um, at 45 Marion Street.
Unless, unless this is directly related to design or traffic, um, those comments are not, uh, appropriate at this time. And any comments I have to say against or about the management, um, really is not relevant to this particular hearing. Um, if you want to submit that letter in writing, that would be fine, uh, but I caution you as you continue to limit your remarks to exactly what is relevant here.
I, I understand what you're saying and I would be happy to, um, submit, uh, what we have in writing here. Um, but I respectfully disagree that this is completely germane to the conversation, not specifically to the traffic or, um, the design of the building, but the overall scope of the project and the potential impact on the neighborhood.
Okay. What I, what I am not going to allow is anything negative being said about the developer's management style. It, regardless, or, you know, I just don't think it's relevant here. I may be anticipating what you're saying incorrectly, but the actual management style is not relevant here.
It's management style as well as specific circumstances, but I, I understand what you're saying and, um, I'm happy to submit this in writing.
Thank you.
Um, to you, uh, to the board, as well as to the Board of Selectmen and others who would be, um, involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leppson. Anybody else? All right. Um, Ms. Palermo, is there something you would like to ask at this point? We can have a general discussion amongst ourselves and then decide what comes next.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Hussey?
No questions. I guess we should discuss what we're gonna suggest about the north elevation.
Uh, the north elevation or the...
Well, the elevation next to the house.
Yeah, I think that's east. It's hard to tell.
Let's, uh, let's take a look.
Well, regardless, the one, the one facing the house. Yeah, what I see is that, I mean, I wish we could go with the columns. I thought it was a great idea too, but apparently, uh, we are not given a sufficient, um, agreement by the developer, who if they have something to say, can go up to the podium.
All right.
Um, my biggest issues right now are the design of the side facing the neighbor on Thondike Street and the door.
The door to the garage.
Yes. The door to the garage. Sorry.
The door to the garage.
He doesn't like the door to the garage.
Yeah. So I think the more immediate matter is the side facing, um, Thondike.
Yeah, and I, I think I, I can also add something about the garage door and the developer is making a valid point that if we require anything other than a door that allows the air to move in and out of the garage, it's gonna require substantial redesign of the garage and for mechanical equipment purposes.
Well, that, that being said, there are, I'm, I'm sorry, there's another project...
And so for aesthetic reasons, there could be adjustments to what they have designed that would look more attractive. But I personally think it's a little extreme at this point to ask them to put in solid doors and windows and mechanical systems that would service the garage now. That's my opinion.
Oh, absolutely. I agree. Mechanical system would be really, really noisy.
Yeah, I don't know enough to know if that's necessary, because I don't...
I guess they're, they're really, really noisy.
Yeah, no, no. That's whether or not they'd be necessary. Um, I know there is another project going where they also have, um, uh, well, we won't get there, because...
I mean, the code says that if you don't have a certain amount of openings in the wall for the garage...
Yeah.
You're required to mechanically ventilate the space. That's, that's...
Exactly. Otherwise, it's unhealthy for people who park their cars there.
No, I can understand that. But is there somebody who can directly address what the health aspects are?
No, I, I think, I think in this case, you need to accept the professional opinion of the architect and the real estate lawyer, that you are going into a territory where you are asking for a substantial revision of the design of the garage to address ventilation because you don't like the door.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Mr. Engler?
For the next hearing, we'll, we'll bring five, six different designs that won't, that won't necessitate the significant mechanical changes, but maybe will give us more guidance through you as to, yes, we like this style a lot more than that. But, so hopefully that would work.
That would be fantastic. I would really appreciate that. But, so on to the side. Um, what are your comments, Chris, about, uh, that you would recommend for changes?
Chris, if it's helpful, this is what they had submitted originally, which is somewhat better than what they're doing now, in my opinion.
Well, I guess my tendency would be to go, go with brick on the returns and use this material where the stairs...
So, Peter, Bartasch, you had said something earlier about brick not being possible. Um, all the way up on the back, what was it? You'd made a comment about that.
I, I made a comment about, yes, I'm sorry. My comment related to the brick and its presence on the facade facing 78 Thondike Street is, is not a question of a technical feasibility. Um, and is more, uh, it was more a design and aesthetic consideration we had made, um, feeling that having brick on that location would be more monolithic and something we had a little bit more control of, whether it's by color or by texture, uh, and thereby using lap siding or, or the shingle style siding to really create more, more texture on that facade.
What about Chris's suggestion that you reverse what you did with this design? And that's what I think your suggestion is, Chris, that they put brick where they had the lap siding and the lap siding where you had the brick on your previous design. Would that be something? It, in, in my view, the benefit would be, as I said previously, you would get the advantage of making the height less significant visually if you, if you had more brick there. Would that be something you consider?
Um, I, so I, I think the, the, the functional response to the suggestion that having the material on the first three floors being different than the upper floor, um, changing the perception of height on that facade specifically, uh, the thing, one thing to keep in mind is that in elevation, you're looking at the third and the fourth floor kind of almost in a, in a flat perspective, whereas in real, in the reality, that, that upper floor is stepped back so you won't perceive them in the same plane. Uh, so I don't know that the material or color similarity drives the perception of height on that facade. But with regard to the application of brick on that facade, because of the potential impacts on some other aspects of the project by putting brick in that location, it's something that I'd be happy to review, uh, with the development team and, and we'll take into consideration as we, we look at the project over the next couple of weeks.
That would be helpful. I, I realize it's a more expensive material than cement, cementitious siding and, and I realize that's, I keep, I don't know that it would have any impact on the structural. I'm looking at Chris with this question mark.
Structural?
Yeah, I don't think it would have any impact on that. So it seems to me it's really a, it's more of a cost issue.
No, it's strictly an aesthetic issue, really.
Well, it is a little more expensive. I'm not saying that that's not why we shouldn't ask you to do it, but...
Sure.
Um, I, I, I think that might improve things.
We'll come back in a couple of minutes.
That would be great. As people know, we are nearing the end of the evening, as well as the end of this, uh, hearing process. So what I would like to happen for the next September 18th hearing, um, is to do just exactly as Mr. Engler has suggested for the last two issues. One is to see what sort of, um, mix up or change you can make, uh, to the side of the building facing the Thondike neighbor and, uh, see what can be done about the doors. Right now, I see those as the outstanding issues.
Also, we were going to, uh, if possible, um, hear from the lift representative.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
We will, that will be...
Thank you.
I, I would just like to add, I think...
I'm sorry, Mr. Hussey has something.
That's okay. Finish.
I was just gonna say, so those three issues could be discussed next time and hopefully resolved. And then also, um, I would like to have a draft of possible conditions for the board to consider. Um, just as a reminder, um, if you close the hearing, you still have 40 days in which to make a decision and submit a decision.
Ah, okay.
After the close of the hearing. So if we meet on September 18th, if we can discuss conditions, I don't know that we can do it, you know, one evening, but hopefully we could. And if these other issues are resolved, the hearing could be closed and then there would be other meetings that you would have in public to discuss what conditions you want and what the decision should say.
My understanding of the difference is that, uh, and I accept totally what you're saying, uh, no one from the public would be able to make comment after the hearing is closed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd like to have, aside from the developer, having a list of the conditions, I'd like the planning department as well to work up, see if we're in Congress.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I meant that I would have a list of conditions.
Yeah, right. I'm talking about having both the developer and the planning department draw a list of conditions.
Yeah, as is cus- as is customary, what we, what we'll do prior to the next hearing is we'll update the waiver list as we understand it to be, based on the design. We'll submit a plan set of record to the town, which will be engineering, architecture, the plan before you, all the latest and greatest, so the town has one plan set appropriately dated. Um, and we'll submit that all to the benefit of the planning department, so they have, and then they'll obviously vet the waivers and incorporate in the decision. And then to Polly's point, technically from the day of the close of the decision, you have another 40 days to vote and to, and to have that decision done. We would hope it doesn't take that long, but legally, that's within your right. Um, and I think that's the only points I wanted to make.
I will, I will, one thing. Uh, as Jesse Geller has asked in the past, please do not throw into your waivers anything else that might be relevant to building a 40B.
Sure. And then, and the, the other thing that, I know what I wanted to say now. Not only can the public not speak, but we're not allowed to submit any new information once the public hearing is completed. So if you said, well, you know, do this, that or the other, we can't do that either. So it's not only the public's not allowed to participate, we're not allowed to participate with new information.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to add, Mr. Engler, for your list of things that I would expect at the next hearing, is something that Chris raised earlier, and that is, with your revised drawings, um, it's on sheet C1C, the zoning analysis. Um, as we discussed previously, the, the, um, the zoning analysis doesn't fit what you're doing now. And I'd like to see what the current FAR will be with the new building, et cetera, et cetera. So...
And that would be part of the waiver list too, but it's nice if we had a separate zoning analysis sheet.
And, and I, I would ask, please submit it a week before the hearing so that I have a chance to review it with my handy dandy zoning code. So I get the basics.
And that's not that far away, so...
Yeah.
Um, the last thing is, I don't know whether you, you anticipated this in the plan set that you submit. We do need real elevations to show the height of the building. What you've shown tonight were really renderings, not, not elevations.
So that would be a good thing to have on, uh, the 18th as well.
When is the next meeting?
September 18th.
Again, I, I would ask that we have it a week before if possible. Again, I, I would like to see as much detail as possible a week before, which would be, uh, September 11th, if it's the 18th.
Well, we can ask. At least a few days, not, uh, the day of.
Yes.
Thank you. You can take more time on your various designs of the facade and the door. No, it's the plans that I want. Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. I'd, I'd like to see, cause we've had a lot of discussion about some minor changes and more significant changes and, thank you.
Is there anything else outstanding, Polly?
I think that's it.
All right.
So you need to announce that the hearing will be continued until September 18th.
Yes. Yes. So we are now adjourning this hearing until September 18th at 7 o'clock. Thank you very much.